You are watching Access LaPorte County Channel 97. Coming up next is the September 4th, 2024 meeting of the Michigan City Common Council and Mayor's Office Workshop. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access laporte county dot org.
Alright, we're gonna go ahead and get started.
Let's go. Let's go.
Yep, it's 5:03. Good evening. This workshop tonight, we call this workshop tonight, we've been working on for several months, a fee analysis. And Brandon Square is here from Baker Tilly, who's gonna help us walk through this. Several, well, most of all departments have participated in this. As I said last night at the city council meeting, this is, this what we're doing tonight is what we've accomplished with Baker Tilly. So everything that's presented here are changes in fees. There's some consolidations and in some of the fees. Again, as I stated, there are fees that had been changed since the 70s, 80s, 90s, you name it, right? So we need to right-size ourselves and plan accordingly as we move forward with the city and especially as we grow, to make sure that we have the charge of the right amount of monies for the fees that we have. This does not include trees or refuse. That wasn't a part of this. But there will be some ordinances that come forward for refuse in the future and fees for those. Because we know that's important. We keep hearing a whole lot about refuse, but people expect us to pick up couches daily and pick up furniture and clean outs and all those things. And they expect it to be handled, but all, all I can say is that our landfill charges are way up and taxpayer dollar does not cover that. So they, you know, so that is just something we've been offering for free that really has become a burden to the city as far as our dollars. So this focus tonight is really on all of the fee analysis that Baker Tilly did. And I'll let Amber, our attorney, say a few things before I turn it over to Brandon, so that we can talk about how, how this is set up so that, so that we were trying to make it so you can easily follow along. So I'll turn it over to Attorney Lepage Dogg.
Thank you, Mayor. So Brandon will introduce himself here in a second, but he helped us put the fee analysis together and many of the departments worked hand in hand with him. He presented us with this fee report. As you start to turn through the fee report, when you get to page two, it'll have the headings on the far left-hand side. You'll see the different administrations, amusement, animals. What I did is I put a draft form of an ordinance together. And the draft form of the ordinance, each exhibit to it will mirror what the changes are. So as you start with administration, exhibit A will be administration. So if the intent is we, we want to go with the recommendations, then this will be what it looks like in the ordinance for the changes to occur. So we can follow along that way so you can see where it'd be implemented actually in our code if we adopt.
So I would say take, take off the ordinance so you can follow along. This is kind of your index then. So I would, I would take that off your package, the two pages, so that as we go through this, you can follow along and say, okay, we're looking at administration. Exhibit A is administration. And then exhibit B will be amusement and entertainment. Exhibit C, as we get through them, you'll be able to follow along that way. Okay.
Okay, and Brandon's floor George.
So does everybody have a copy that wants a copy?
Yep.
Okay, cool. So I'm Brandon Struggs of Baker Tilly. I'm a senior consultant there. And like Mayor said, I've been working on this in conjunction with some of your staff for a few months now. And I'm gonna show it up here as well, just so I can point and see what I'm, we can all be looking at the same thing if we want to be. So just for your information, the first pair, or first page of this report is simply kind of the process that we went through. So I'm not gonna go through that, but that's just for your own individual knowledge.
And we'll, they got a copy of the report already. We'd sent that.
Okay. And then I don't want to focus on pages two through five, because two through five are what your fees would look like now after all of these changes. It doesn't show what exactly did change. We just wanted you to have a chart or a schedule that included all of your fees as we are proposing. So what I want to focus on is starting on page six. That's pretty small. But the reason it's pretty small is because, so we call this a fee analysis, but it's really more than that. And I say that because this city had a plethora of fees, almost to the point where it got to be too many. And we found with cities and towns, the more fees and the more detailed fees that you have, it actually is the opposite of what you could think. You actually tend to charge, like enforce those fees less just because it becomes too cumbersome and there's too much going on. So like Amber said, the documents you have are in the same order. This first section that I want to focus on is the administration section. So you'll see in the proposed fee column, we've limited it down to two fees rather than about ten. And for this one, a lot of it, it really is just due to condensing the fees. So you'll see that per audio tapes, videotapes, DVDs and CDs, we had it broken out to multiple how it's produced. And we've just called it one overall fee for those things. And then the other thing that changed is the certification of documents. So that fee was only a dollar and due to inflation and then just simply the comparatives around the state, we've increased that fee to five dollars. A dollar really just isn't even worth the time to charge as a fee. That's where the bump to five came from. And then the rest of the fees under administration were either, can either be condensed and fall under the other two fees or they weren't needed, so they were gotten rid of. That section was pretty simple and straightforward. Not a lot of time spent on that section. Any questions? And by the way, I feel free to make this more of a discussion than just a presentation. If you have a question, don't worry about saving. Save it until the end. You can just raise your hand and we'll address it right then and there. Yeah.
Yeah, Brandon. How do these fee compare with other cities of similar size, your proposed fees?
So that's somewhat of a loaded question, simply because from cities to city and town to town, these schedules, there's no like template that all units follow. So it's really hard to compare it to just all units around. There are some fees in here that you'll say, that will say per comparative study, which we just kind of, there's a schedule later in the report that the few fees that we did that for, it shows how you compare. But a lot of them, there's not really a good way to compare, just because they range all over the place.
We have fees that other cities don't have. They have fees we don't have, but when it comes to building fees, things like that, we could compare some of those because everyone has a building permit, right? So they did, I don't remember, Goshen Portage.
LaPorte.
Or, yeah, regional cities kind of around the world. And that's kind of how we did those fees later on.
Okay. Right, and I will say when we did compare certain fees that we found that other cities or towns had, that you guys tended to be on the lower end. And that's just because the, you haven't had a study like this done in so long. So this was perfect on your city's part by having this study done. So the next section, another small one, is amusements and entertainments. So a few of these fees, the first three, or the first two didn't change at all. And then, I don't know really how much this fee comes into play, so the public hall and theater fee really, there wasn't a study per se done behind it. It was more of just condensing it into one so that you're not separating it out depending on the capacity of the public hall or theater. And it's just a base fee of a hundred dollars. So the next one is one of kind of a bigger ticket section.
I got, I got a question, yeah. Under that, in amusements and entertainments? Alright. Uh, where was that? It says the maximum amount of the cash bond. So I guess if you're having a carnival or something in the neighborhood, you gotta get a cash bond, right, for cleanup?
Correct.
Yeah. So is it always gonna be five hundred dollars? It says the maximum amount, it shall be five hundred. Are we always gonna charge somebody five hundred dollars for that cleanup fee?
So you gotta cross-reference it with 10, 1, 2, 3, and I don't have my whole code here with me. But what I did is, most of our fees are condensed in chapter 50. So what I did is I cut and paste the whole chapter 50 and then I redlined where the changes would be with what Brandon is recommending.
Okay, that's fine.
But sometimes then I had to cross-reference it when you get into the heart of, of the code. Like for example, the next one's gonna be animals. That's chapter 14. So I had to go into the heart of the code as well to cross-reference. It was a nightmare. Just say it, just say it like that. It wasn't funny.
Alright, I want to ask some more questions.
I mean, that's, that's kind of the reason.
Yeah, it has to go somewhere.
We have the option of doing cash bond if it becomes something. I don't think it's mandatory in office.
Funds are already set. So that's a good, this is just fees, it's not fines.
No, it's full.
Okay, so.
Fees and fines.
Yep. Alright.
Animals.
With respect to your department, it was mostly all fees. That's why you don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's fines and some other departments.
Excellent.
Okay, so the animal section, you'll see if you look off to the right side of this piece, that there's the word condensed a lot. And that is because these were, this was one of the sections where your fees were very, very detailed. So we really simplified it and just call it animal violations. So that means that if there's a violation in terms of, in terms of animals, there's a set fee that you're gonna be charged, or set fine, I guess this would be, and it covers everything that was covered with the 20 different fees that you had to hold. And that hundred dollars was kind of a middle ground. These fees range from around fifty dollars to five hundred dollars. So we just met in the middle somewhere and got to a hundred dollars and covered it all to really condense down your, your code. The next piece is the general penalty provision. Again, this is similar to animal violations, but Amber, if you could help me with that, the difference between general fee provision and animal violations. I think the general penalty provision is more broad.
It was more broad. I think we narrowly tailored it in 50, 91.
And we also got rid of your first violation, second violation, third violation, and so on and so forth. It's just, this is your, your fee for that penalty and you don't break it down based on how many times you've met in that case.
Yeah, that's true.
And then per saying neutering animals, instead of breaking it out between type of animal and whether a dog is male or female, it's just condensed down into dogs or cats and there's a fee. Again, that's just the, too many fees, too much going on, so it condenses down, makes it simple. And that's all my comments on that section unless anybody has a question on animals. So the next section is buildings and building regulations. This was really the, the big hitter, the main focus of this study. I actually came up and spent a few hours with Skylar and Sue. And we went through all of these. We used comparative studies. We did cost calculations and just judgment calls. So based on the fee, we just, we had a conversation and came, came to how we arranged. So first, the first two fees here are all heating fees per unit and then all cooling fees per unit. So as you know, there's multiple ways to heat or cool a property. And rather than breaking it into all of the different ways of doing that, we narrowed these inspections down to just the, there's a heating fee and then there's a cooling fee. So we condensed it down a ton. And we also, we again, we kind of met in the middle when it comes to the cost of all these different fees.
So, hold on for a second, because I want to make sure we're following it all the same way. Because the way you have exhibit D, I'm, I'm not looking at this because I didn't bring that with me, unless you have a copy.
Do you have one copy?
Yeah, because I'm, you're talking to that and some of us are just looking at what you gave us. So I just want to make sure everybody's on the same page.
Yeah, he's here. That's right. Yeah, yeah, I got you.
Because if you go to exhibit D, it starts talking about building permit fees first, then electrical permits.
And doesn't start with heating.
Yeah, he's back on 1545.
It's how the code flows.
I know. So we just want to make sure everybody's on the same page.
So by all heating fees, all cooling fees, if I'm replacing my HVAC and all their conditioning, it's a ninety dollar fee to replace my furnace with AC.
I will defer to that.
Plus there's an outside unit, so then there's an additional fee for the.
It's per unit.
Per unit. And it's based upon, what we did was we took the calculation of Sue's inspection time, wear, tear on vehicles, there's a calculation that was done on all that, and then the adjustment was, it was not just a judgment of adjusting it. It was calculated out on wear, tear, inspection time, et cetera, all those things. And then compared to kind of like the, across the board, what the other city. No, no, just, I wanted to get that out for everybody. Place your HVAC. Yeah. It's nine dollars, basically, if you had a condition. Okay. And that's a fee paid to the building. Yep, absolutely.
And since this was such a big focus of the fees, I switched to a later page in the report. There was a calculation done. We took the building commissioners' hourly wage plus their retirement benefits and then came to a total hourly rate. And then we threw discussions with Sue. We came up with approximately how much time, including travel, this would take. And again, this is an average because you don't know if it's gonna be a home that's close to the location or far away. So we calculated her cost of thirty-two, estimated thirty-two dollars. And then there's paperwork that also needs done by administrative assistant. So we did that same calculation there and assumed a lower rate or a lower hourly amount based on how long it takes her to do that. And when we come down with the final amount, we simply rounded it up to the nearest five to come up with the fee.
But this gave us a good base to start with, with respect to like, how much time does it really take to do something? With respect to Sue's time and what you're paying and things of that nature.
Okay. So that covers that page. We're on to page seven of the actual fee analysis document. And if you look in the proposed fee column, the next one down is three hundred dollars. And that is for an inspection for a building containing one or two residential units. So basically, what we did there, and for the one that says buildings contain, or building containing three or more residential units, what we did there is get rid of the breakout for the first year, second year, third year and subsequent year. Just again, because that's too much going on and we simply just made it a flat fee rather than based on how many years. And then if you keep going down, we get into some of the electrical fees. So what we did here is per electrical and commercial, or sorry, commercial and residential, instead of basing it on one hundred amp, two hundred amp, or whatever the case may be, it's simply just commercial or residential inspection and service. It really simplified it so that it's easier to bill out and easier to charge.
We kept residential lower than commercial.
Correct.
It's typically a little bit easier to do a residential inspection, but honestly, a one hundred amp or a two hundred, it's the same time.
Yep, a residential inspection or service is twenty-five dollars versus a commercial at forty-five dollars. So there's the difference there. And then as you keep moving down the page, we get into these electrical, mechanical, general contractors, contractors and subcontractors. So what we focused on here was getting rid of the type of contractor that is listed in that fee type. Instead of listing out all those different types, types of contractors, just narrowed it down to being electrical, mechanical, because the type of contractor ultimately doesn't, doesn't amount to anything. It's still just the work that's being done.
I got a question. Why is there two charges, one for an application and one to get a license?
So there's not anymore. That's how it used to be. And now we narrowed it down and just called it registration and renewal. Oh, I see what you're saying, for electrical and mechanical?
Yeah, yeah. It's got application, a hundred and fifty, and then license, a hundred and fifty. Yeah, why would you have two?
Yeah. Well, those are condensed now down to just.
Pardon?
So now, those have gone away and now it's just like for electrical, mechanical, oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, a hundred and fifty bucks for each of them.
Application.
If you're gonna do it, do it for one, but I don't think both.
But Brandon, I think you said, right, it says review, right? Is that, wait.
No, no.
If you have the fee, we remove the contractor discretion.
Right, but for like, he's saying for the three that say electrical and mechanical, there's an application fee, a license fee and a renewal fee?
Probably because of the, do we pay our licensing?
I think all we did was combine all of this into one.
Do we fund our licensing board? Our application fee?
Same fee.
I don't know the answer to that.
Application.
Because they get paid to be licensed on the license.
Skylar, can you explain that?
I don't know the answer, but my question is, do we pay our licensing board with the application fee? Because those go through the licensing board. That might be, do they get paid too?
They can pay the small amount, yeah.
And that might be, that might be the generation of that fee.
Yeah, I, you know, I don't know. They have to review it and then they have to obtain their license, but that's a different. Don't they have to submit a whole different, they submit their application, then they go through and view it?
I'm looking at it. Did they change?
We can get that. Yeah, we can figure it out. I'm sorry, there's so many in here.
We typically have a registration fee, the, the initial application fee is one fifty and then renewals over it, and I'm not seeing that in here.
Yeah.
But I don't know what's right here. We struck it.
Yeah. If you look at fifty-one, four-one and one, four-two, I don't have the whole code here, but it cross-references section two-two-six-nine-five and two-two-six-nine-eight.
Yeah.
There's two different cross-references for each one of those.
So we need to go back and.
Yeah, and it looks like it used to be a hundred bucks for renewal. It looks like we struck that out and we put it at a hundred and fifty.
Yes.
We still have a hundred dollars for renewal.
Hundred, hundred one forty-two in, in this document.
But the renewal is supposed to, Skylar, I agree with you. Renewal is supposed to be.
We'll, we'll figure it out.
Yeah, we'll come back to this.
Yeah, I've got them highlighted. We will all revisit that.
Okay, thank you.
Discussion with Skylar.
Alright, cool.
Again, love you pointing that out just so we can iron out the finer details of the report.
So I work it out.
Yep. So as we keep going down, basically the same thing is happening with the registration versus renewal for the different contractors. You just find it, the registration slash renewal, renewal instead of having two separate fees.
That's how electrical should be.
Yes, I, I believe that is correct.
Yeah, we may have to strike one of those out, forty-four, one forty-one or one forty-two, yeah.
I thought we were getting rid of all.
And then as we keep going down, the residential inspection and service, so this is the same concept, concept of the commercial one up above. Basically, we got rid of one hundred and two hundred amp and the temporary inspection. And we just really lumped it all into one residential inspection or service.
Okay.
And as you keep going down, we have the electric signs, it's six dollars. Based off of other comparative units, we went up to forty-five. Violation of unsafe building law didn't change. But we did the violations below unsafe building law. We struck those out and just assumed that that can be rolled up into violation of unsafe building law. Again, just condensing fees. There were a few, as we keep going down, there were simply inflationary increases.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
So, so those fees are anywhere from fifty dollars up to twenty-five hundred dollars then. That used to be. So we're saying up to twenty-five hundred for, it's twenty-five hundred period. So all these, these slum lords or whoever, they get all these first violation, fifty dollars. Second violation, a hundred fifty. We're saying it's twenty-five hundred dollars.
It can be up to.
It could be up to.
I like the way you think though.
I know where you're going.
All I'm saying is if we start doing that up to all the time, they're, well, you used to, you used to.
You used to only charge me a hundred.
Right.
But I'm still doing the same thing.
They need that cost and they need to know that if you're gonna have an unsafe building and people in it, that you could be fined twenty-five hundred dollars.
Each day that there's a violation that exists.
Oh, okay, that's even better. Alright.
But, but Mayor, you're saying you want it to be more defined, like a violation, one violation, two.
If it's saying up to, that's, that's, that's not definable for me. I mean, when you start saying up to, is it the severity of it and then, then we have to decide severity? I don't want us in a situation to have to decide the severity of up to.
Boom, flat fee. So, oh, you're saying flat fee?
Yeah, flat.
I'm just saying, at, at some point, and maybe, maybe there's a first, maybe there is a thousand dollars, right? And then severity, you know, up to twenty-five hundred. Because you gotta, it has to be something that hits somebody's pocketbook to keep their places safe.
Don't take away your discretion. You, you have to leave discretion.
Right, but you gotta start with, and then have the discretion.
Just don't limit yourself. Don't box yourself into everything. It's the max.
Yeah, because Mayor, I agree with you. You can't have up to twenty-five hundred, but then you started, okay, well, we're, we're gonna find you two hundred dollars. Or we'll find you five hundred dollars.
And then it's based on.
You gotta have, yeah, you gotta have a minimum.
Right.
Yeah, a thousand dollars.
Minimum of thousand up to twenty-five hundred.
These people know, wait, let me, let me finish.
Yeah, yeah.
These people know that they have an unsafe building. And they know that they have people in there and you're jeopardizing their lives. I don't feel sorry for them. They're, they're making money off of this building. So hit them where it hurts and let's correct the problem and get away from this stuff all the time.
So I, I liked it. What were you ever saying?
These are per day though. It's not like it's a one time. Hit them the next day or three days later.
So I would say a minimum of a thousand up to twenty-five hundred.
Whatever.
I just feel like it should be per day and, and it's per day.
Well, the laws design that every single day is a separate.
It's a separate violation.
So.
Okay.
It depends.
That's something that could be, you guys work.
I mean, as an attorney, I personally like the up to, that gives the discretion, but that's me.
And I will be okay with that too, as long as the team is all on the same page. One, I don't want, one building commissioner be nicer than the next. And then it's all, it's, it's subjective versus objective and, and I want this building inspected because this one does this.
I want to mark this all first.
That's my only concern is that we, we will have to make sure the team is trained to be all on the same page or to, to review them before they do the fines, so that everybody's in agreement so that somebody feels they're being picked on or the other one isn't, and, and it leaves too much to that. And I don't, I don't, I want to remove that, right?
I guess I would just.
Whatever you guys want.
I would, I would just offer up this one comment that we will be automating soon. So our inspectors are gonna become more proactive. They're gonna have laptops out in the field. I guess maybe the discretion comes into that with giving them some of that discretion, but it's up to you guys to decide. If you want to set a minimum and a max, but we're gonna be, we're gonna be keeping track of this.
We can do that, but my concern is what the team is gonna do there. It that everybody's system is gonna say that. Is that everybody's system on the same page.
You get one, you look in there and you get one violation, okay, you already paid a thousand.
I'm used, I'm used to laws.
We'll come back to that, but I want you all to think about that, what you, what you would like to see. I just wanna make sure that we pull some of that out.
That's my point, so I like it. There's also kind of a difference from peeling paint versus a life safety condition.
Right, yeah, right.
You know?
Exactly.
You can't get some senior on a fixed income with a thousand bucks.
Right, right.
And it adds on the attitude a lot too, they're saying, you know, if they're working with the city.
I feel like.
I think discretion should.
It's so broad, I, I just, man.
Yeah, but what we're dealing with here is building owners, correct? We're talking about building owners, not a resident.
Otherwise, not a step's pain.
So we're not, and we're not talking, we're not talking about a, a senior citizen. We're talking about somebody that owns a home and is renting it out and it's unsafe.
That's not the rich button.
No, it could be.
It's anyone who violates the unsafe building.
So saying it that way, I'm okay with it up to twenty-five hundred. But I just wanna get that out, we need to have that conversation because that means it could be any residential or.
It does, it does.
Right.
So up to twenty, now we'll move back to.
It's still daily, and, and keep in mind, we'll have much better records with the new, we'll be, it'll be live time.
Okay.
They're supposed to be doing everything on these things.
All right.
It's gonna be structured.
For, uh, for allowing us to decompress that.
Absolutely, sounds important.
I mean, we haven't visited these in years, so.
We good?
Yes.
Okay. So moving on, again, the rest of the ones on this page are fairly insignificant. We have condensed a few of them, a couple of the smaller ones, we simply did inflationary, inflationary increase. And again, condensed others.
Just, actually, how many probably, how many did we condense? Get rid of?
A lot.
Two-hundred?
Okay, I just want that the public to know, we're getting rid of a hun-.
I would say, like, in terms of just the part of fees, it's over cut half.
Okay, let's get it.
Where are the vacant houses? Did we change that, we talked about it?
It's coming up soon.
Okay, you just didn't get to, okay.
All right.
So moving on to page eight, we're still talking about buildings and building regulations.
I got one part I wanna do.
Yeah.
Yeah, where it says, uh, commercial and industrial service.
We gotta change it, we gotta fix it.
Talking about one-twenty to two-hundred-and-eight volt, single-phase service. The current fee is thirty cents.
What's, what's that for?
It's, it's, it's per.
It's, yeah.
It's, it's like thirty, thirty cents per amp or it's, it's a per amount, we're gonna get rid of that.
Okay.
That, that's gonna go away.
Okay.
It doesn't take any longer to inspect that than it does, you know, let's say a, a three-phase is a three-phase.
Okay, but yes, you're, yes.
Right, that was the silliness of it.
Okay.
That was absolutely silliness, yeah.
So Sue, do me a favor, just look at fifty-one-three-three in the ordinance I have and make sure it matches it, 'cause I think I gotta try a couple more pages in there.
Fifty-one-three-three?
Yeah, fifty-one-three-three.
I gotta get here. This is fifty. They're different than what they have, fifty-one-three-three.
What was it again, Amber, I'm so sorry.
D?
Fifty-one-three-three.
Oh, fifty-one-three-three, yeah, shit, I'm so sorry, I'm like.
Oh.
Right back here.
It's on the form of ordinance.
Yeah.
It would be exhibit D, page two. 'Cause I think I gotta take off the point twenty, point twenty and point thirty. You see that?
Right here, something in here. But we don't want that.
I gotta remove those two things.
Yeah, we don't want, yeah, 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 yeah.
We're gonna remove that stuff.
Yeah, it's too complicated.
Okay.
Especially.
Unnecessary.
Okay, so, hey Jay, top of it, the purpose of these did change. Other, next two, we just did inflationary, so it's small now, it's still small now after. The one I wanna focus on here is the private septic system and private sewer disposal system. We eliminated those because private sewers are not permitted in city limits. And then the rest of the fees on this page were simply a discussion with the client. There is one thing that is brand new and that's a vacant building registration fee. That's a fee you currently don't have. And we have added that for first year, second year, third year in the amounts of five hundred, seven hundred and fifty and a thousand dollars. We've also added a fee for a zoning verification letter.
We did already have that in.
And we added a historic preservation fee of fifty dollars.
So we, we do have, again, an abandoned housing registration.
It was already in there.
Yes, we do have it.
We just changed it.
Yes.
We didn't have a fee for the registration.
Right, we had a fee, but it allowed you to register voluntarily at no cost. And I'm hoping that that got removed, that was the idea, was to remove that voluntarily.
Yeah, no one ever volunteered.
Everybody just voluntarily registered.
Don't volunteer, or they don't.
Tell me the cost, why the fees and, and the cost? Unless it's us going to board it up and check on it.
It's that, and it's just basically encouraging people to put them back on the tax rolls and put people in them and not let them sit in neighborhoods. So it's graduated up, like, okay, the first year, okay, we got you, okay, fine. But by the third year, what are you gonna do with this building? You know, what, what's the plan for it?
There's a lot of reasons why we don't want them vacant, I can take you to houses right now that have been vacant for twenty years. They're an attractive nuisance, they drive down property values, they, they bring crime, that's just imperative.
These are from South Bend.
Okay.
These are from South Bend, they're directly from South Bend.
So, how it's worded right now, it distinguishes between vacant and abandoned. So if something was abandoned, that's where the fee structure come in versus vacant.
And I don't think there should be a difference.
Was the opt, was the intention to change all of that as well?
Yeah, abandoned is a different word altogether, it means different.
So you want abandoned and vacant to have the same fee structure?
I think we do.
Because a vacant could be not.
Abandoned is like, in my opinion, help me out, Amber, abandoned's like someone completely walks away, now it's going on tax sale, no one's dealing with anything. Vacant, we can lean it, vacant's just, I own a building.
You don't have residency.
I own a building, I own my house, I own another building, I let it sit vacant. I'm paying my taxes, but I'm not doing anything with it.
See, it, so let me ask this question, because I know people.
That probably wasn't a question.
What if, what if they have a vacant building, but they're using it for storage? Or how do you determine what's vacant? Because there are people who do that.
I guess it just depends on are they using it, if they're using it for storage, are they allowed to use it for storage? That's the other thing, so certain buildings and zoning classes aren't allowed to be used for storage. Like a house, you can't store your tires in it.
Right.
You gotta put it to a house, that's what it's for.
Okay.
And yes, we do have people doing that, using houses for storage, we do have them.
Okay. So think, 'cause I, I could argue that, I'm like, but it's not vacant, I'm going there on a regular basis. I frequent it, I keep the yard up.
If it's maintained, you know.
So is it vacant or not? Because I'm not living in it.
Yeah, if you're paying, yeah.
Just maintain, the taxes are paid.
So you're gonna charge me, even though I'm keeping up with my home?
But would you wanna live next to someone storing the tires there is the question.
But I'm saying, you don't know what's stored in there, nobody would, unless somebody went there. I'm, I'm just being that devil's advocate.
Yeah, I got it.
You're gonna charge me, but I'm keeping up my property, it's not a nuisance, but I'm gonna be charged 'cause I don't have a person in it.
I like you separated, just doing it as abandoned.
Yeah, abandoned.
Abandoned, 'cause how, how I have it written as, is abandoned would have the fees on it, vacant would not.
Abandons go away, because abandoned ends up on a tax sale at some point.
With leads from us.
Wait, wait, so, so abandoned eventually goes away, vacants don't.
We still need to do some type of registration and fee for vacant though.
We do.
So I think that's.
I don't disagree with that.
Yeah. Vacants are, vacants are still a huge problem for us.
I know they are, um.
But even when, but even when they register, it gives us an opportunity to say, well, what are you, what are you using it for? And if they're saying, well, I almost stick a bunch of junk in it, well, well, that's a house, you can't do that. You actually can't do that in the zoning code.
Okay, so that's, so vacant needs to be separated, we need to come back to that.
Okay.
What about someone like the old whiskey man in Franklin Road, would that be considered a bank, a bank vacant or abandoned?
I would say that that's a vacant building.
Uh, and it's vacant, you know, they said, you know, it had a fire in two thousand and nine, they had a lot of water damage, and they said it's got asbestos issues, it was built nineteen-twenty-nine. Now, the people owning it paid a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for it in two thousand and ten when they bought it from paychecks. You know, a lot of people ask about that, you know, on social media, how it's built, that house.
So we need to think through that.
Yeah, we can think, we're the, I, I, we threw, we put it in here because we're keeping up with the list and it, it honestly, the list has gone down, but there still are a lot, quite a few on that list, so it's basically encouraging people not to hold on to, like, come on, you gotta, you gotta figure out a plan for this stuff.
Ideally, right now, the vacants remain vacant. I, again, I could take you to a hundred houses right now that have been vacant for five, ten, fifteen, twenty years, and there's no incentive for them to make it not vacant anymore. People wanna buy them, people are, are bucking, hey, do you have any houses we can buy? We went up, and they can't, they're sitting there.
Sue, I guess the question is how do we determine something?
That's, that's what we need to decide.
It's easy when it's five, ten, twenty years, but when's the clock start?
That's it, that's, that's what we have to decide.
Okay.
A lot of them are still paying the taxes after twenty years.
No, it's healthy, it's crazy. This is what we wanted to have this discussion, that's why I put it in.
This is important, this is an important discussion to have.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
So we'll come back to that.
We can come up, let me, let me research on what other cities do to break it apart and we'll come up with something. Maybe, maybe I'll reach out to Brian, Brian, if you have ideas or.
We have more trouble with vacant than we do abandoned.
Okay.
Abandoned, saw themselves, typically people get them on tax sale.
They do.
They go away.
But even, but even then, if you're looking at, if something could be vacant and maintained. Your problem becomes this when it's vacant and unmaintained, which probably leads itself to a whole host of other code violations, right?
Well, we're there, if we're pulling up out there and putting it, asking, there's a reason, we're probably there. If it's a well-maintained house, we're probably not there.
Correct.
Yeah.
We won't even notice it.
We won't be, yeah.
Correct.
Sue, how do we define nuisance for vacant?
Yeah, where are you?
That's a good question, okay.
All right. Thank you.
So if there's no more discussion around that, I'm gonna move on to the next section of the businesses. Skip the first one, it didn't change the additional ID badge for replacement. The next ones, for a canvasser, peddler or solicitor, we have updated those fees and those fees are based off of a comparative study. If you look to the bottom of this section as well, the street vendors were also based on a comparative study. And that is on page eleven, you can also see it on the screen. The bottom section. Again, so this comparative study, you'll see that we have seven unit, seven different cities up at the top. But a lot of the fees are blank, and that's because going back to the whole, you know, fees vary from city to city. But based off of the fees that we could find, we have used, LaPorte was a good reference and Crown Point City was also a good reference. One's pretty low, the other's pretty high. So what we did with your fees for these two services, or two fees, is we've met in the middle and kind of gotten in between the, the lower round and the high ground. So that takes care of those. Some of the other fees, fine for violation of license fee requirements, we have up that to two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. And we've also gotten rid of the garage sale, fine for violation of garage sale articles and fine for violation of course wrong character articles. We've also gotten rid of the imposed fee of fifty percent.
Yeah, a question, yeah, the garage sale fine name you got rid of?
That, yeah, that, it bums up into fine for violation of license fee requirements. It, we just condensed it down to be more vague encompasses the two that were gotten rid of.
So let me ask you a question, so you're supposed to get a permit to do.
You're, you're supposed to get, uh, I believe, Amber, correct me if I'm wrong, you're supposed to get through border works to do it, right?
At the ride suit?
I think so.
I thought that was revoked.
No, Pat Boy tried to put that on and it didn't go through.
There's no, there's no fee for garage sale.
I thought it had to go through.
As I remember, Pat Boy, Pat Boy tried to get that put through.
And there wasn't a.
And it was, it was booked down.
So we just removed those, 'cause we don't have.
Yeah, there's no fines for that.
So instead of getting specific with those violations, we've changed it to be violation of license fee requirements. And then that just encompasses, basically, if you're violating the fact that you need a fee or that you need to have a license, then you can be fined.
'Cause I think.
So if you don't need a license or a yard sale, then you wouldn't be able to be charged that.
Yeah, I mean, it's too hard to manage that.
Yeah.
Right. But, but we do have a, on the re, on the, on the rear side of that, we do have an enforcement that you can't have one for so many days.
Yeah.
So there's, that's the balance of it.
Oh, okay, so you can't have a garage sale, you just can't have it like every day?
Every day, yeah, absolutely, but, yeah, you can't have a Fleymore get at your residence. We've had a few of those.
Long weekend, holiday weekend.
Yeah.
So we've also added a fee for short-term rentals and short-term rental violations. Apparently that's a big deal here, so we've done that added to the.
Can you go back to the tax of the?
Yeah.
I don't think I have that one.
Which one?
For that, the fifteen percent?
Yeah, there's one in here that, and imposed fee of fifteen percent of annual realized tax savings during the vacant period. We removed that from your fees because that's more, that isn't typically a fee we see in code. Uh, that's a whole separate property tax issue, so we've removed it just 'cause we felt it was in an inappropriate place for it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is the proposed fee for short-term, that's cheap rentals, only forty dollars?
That's the permit fee for short-term rentals. And then the violation fine is five hundred dollars.
Yeah, I suggest that'd be fifty or a hundred dollars.
So state law mandates that it can only be, wait, hold on, I think the state law says it can only be forty dollars.
We're at the max.
Yeah, so they set the, the cap on it.
Really?
Yeah, I, I put that in the here so that we wouldn't forget it, it violates state law. Yeah.
But our, our fine for not registering.
The, the fine could be set higher, but the actual permit fee is capped.
Which happens quite a bit.
Yeah.
Yes.
Of course, that one.
So let's do that.
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
And you can see we took out first offense that.
Yes, yes, that's good.
And I see his interns could do some short-term rental violations, enforcement.
So the state is encouraged, forty dollars.
The state is encouraging it, yes.
Yeah, it's protected. Yeah, it's protected.
They limit what you do.
That's why.
They're good lobbyists.
Yeah, because I'm trying to sit, I'm sitting here in my pocket, but we can't. Forty bucks?
They can't put a, like, takeover in their neighborhood. One house at a time.
So, yeah, and I'll, I'll be really honest, we spent a lot of time on that, we, we pranked out lists of those once a week for, for short-term rental lists.
Yeah, because that, my own concern is that, you know, we're a lakefront community, but now it's becoming more and more away from that, that half mile, mile radius, now it's the whole entire city.
Oh, yes.
And, you know, our neighboring communities are very restrictive. Uh, and we're not. I'm not saying I want to be, but I'm, I'm like forty dollars, there's gotta be a balance. Yeah, because we're not.
That's just the permit fees.
Right, because we're not getting, um, I mean, yes, the tourism bureau gets money from that, but we don't get a direct.
Permit fee.
Oh, for sure.
For the work that we have to do around those. I, I may be asking for somebody for.
Let's, how do you say it, it's going to the neighborhood, in my house, in my neighborhood, there's something with a pool that apparently is on a pool rental site. They've got eight or ten cars in their park and every weekend.
A pool rental site?
Wow.
Yeah, there's like Airbnb for house pools.
Oh.
It's a short-term rental.
Down with that, okay. Well, it's like ten cars in the driveway or this.
Yeah, so you can rent somebody else's house.
All right.
All right, so we'll look at that, because I got a concern about settlements that are, that are.
I think there should be more. I spoke to Tramell a little bit about that as well. About other communities and what?
They do.
Okay. All right, we'll, we'll have to come up with some things.
Mayor?
Yes.
Did I go back?
Yeah.
To short-term rental? Yeah. With the amount of short-term rentals that we have here in Michigan City, I know we have a lot, because I have two or three in my block on Gardena Street. There's more and more here coming, that I believe, that for a first time, or not for the initial permit fee, for a short, is only forty?
That's a state statute.
State law.
Oh, is that what you were saying?
Yeah, state law, that's okay, that's okay.
That's why I'm like.
That's a steal.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's a steal.
I think that was kind of why we went up on the penalty, was to say, okay, but if you don't register, we have to tell you, pay us five hundred bucks.
It's like tax caps.
On the other side of it, these are people coming in and spending money in their town.
Brilliant.
Okay. Yeah. And does it have to be initial, or can it be annual fee?
Um, it is.
It says initial, but can it be, be an annual fee?
I have to double check, Mayor, I think it's a one-time fee. I think it's a one-time, I, I, yes. I mean, let me, I'll pull it up on my phone.
Okay, all right.
I think it's one time.
We'll come back, if it, if it can be annually, we need to change it to annual. All right, I'm done.
Okay.
I think it's one time.
So, next is a mobile fee vendor, we didn't change those fees. I already talked on the street vendor fees, those are based off the comparative, and then the transient merchant one, we kept the same as well. So that's it for the businesses. Fees and fines. You have no questions, the next section is environment. So, this one, that again was very, very detailed in terms of whether or not it was graffiti, a noise violation, or whatever the case may be. He had just simply condensed it down to be a fine for all environmental violations, and if, I don't know whether or not we like this, but we're back to the whole maximum fine thing of a thousand dollars.
Yep.
I don't know if that makes sense in this case for you guys or not. If it does, great, if not, we can change it.
No, I'd say leave it, that's, I think that's internal.
Internal discussion.
Yeah.
I think, I think we come up internally with what our cadence will be, and then just leave it up to.
Yeah.
Okay, wonderful.
I mean, I, I don't, I don't even know that we knew some of these fees existed, so, yeah. Hydronic ears.
Okay, the next section is fire prevention and protection. So some of these, like, first four on page eight, those were not changed. One thing we did change is we got rid of, or we condensed down the fireworks violation, because that just lumps into general penalty provision. And then we increased the non-emergency medical assistance fee up to four hundred dollars, that's a fifty-dollar increase, and that was just per the fire chief. And the rest of them did not change either. So really we condensed it in, and then one increased being the non-emergency medical assistance fee. Next is law enforcement. So the police chief sent us a schedule of what the fees should be. So you'll see that some, some of these fees never existed, so they are now being implemented. That being like an accident correction report, background check, case report, or criminal history check. Those are all new fees. Some of the fees were got rid of, like the fee for juvenile history data report, the fee for limited criminal history inspection, and release of the report. And then we also have some other new fees, that being fingerprinting and portable breath test check. Again, those were all provided by the police chief. Nothing to discuss in terms of the municipal health system, those all stayed the same. And then if we go down to offenses and miscellaneous provisions, we got some, or most of them did not change, a couple of them went up. And then we conve, condensed down some of these specific keys, like urinating in public, or shooting, or throwing stones, or missiles. We just combined those into all other offenses, so that they could lump into, uh, not following rules, basically, is what I would consider it. We've got no questions, we'll move on to street sidewalks and other public places. So, the first fee is a new fee, and it's calculated by Tom Spent on this, it's a fee for pavement cuts. So we got rid of, Skylar, who was the gentleman you talked to?
Uh, we worked with Shong and, um, and, uh, and Tim Warner on this, the engineer, and just, a lot of this is just outdated, it was outdated.
Yeah, so through discussion with Tim, I couldn't remember his name, thank you.
And then doing Shong's calculation of Tom Spent and Tim's, Tom Spent versus what we, you know.
Yeah, so Tim has said that the fee for pavement cuts does not need to be broken out based off of what type of material it is, because it doesn't change the amount of time it takes to do the pavement cut. So what we did, I'll show you the calculation here, based off of information provided by Tim. Again, we use their hourly rate, and they're assuming hourly rate when it comes to benefits, and how long it takes them to do the pavement cut, or the paperwork for pavement cut. Again, we came to sixty-four dollars and just rounded it up to the, to the nearest five for ordinance simplicity. So there was some thought put into that one. That being because Tim said that's a fairly important fee that we really needed a fee retrieving our cost for, or your cost for.
Yeah, and the reason we took out McCarton Brick, we require hard surface, asphalt, brick, favors, it really doesn't matter, it's hard surface. So that's the simplicity of it.
Yep.
Still same curb cut, same size, hard surface, that's it.
And then another one Tim wanted us to hit on was the placement of a dumpster in a public right-of-way. What he wanted us to change was the fee or the fine based off of the amount of days, he wanted to get rid of that, and just say it's twenty-five dollars, it doesn't matter how many days it is. Next is for traffic and vehicles. We've gotten rid of motor vehicle inspections, and then for parking violations, that's another one, we removed the time periods. So it doesn't matter when you pay it, a parking violation ticket is fifty dollars flat. And then the other two fees for, um, placing snow or ice on the street, or tow truck inspection fee, those stay the same. No problems there. Utility fees were not a focus of this study, so all of those have been kept the same. That would be more of a utility-based study than it is a fee analysis, but we did keep them in here just for your reference.
Hey, Brian, I got it, I got a question.
Sure, then.
So under traffic and vehicles, it says tow truck inspection fee. Who goes out and inspects the tow trucks? Do they come to the police station and get inspected? Or do we go out and inspect tow trucks in the, I, I've never heard of it, I'm just asking. Chief, I have no idea what that's all about.
I'll, I'll look into it, I, I thought they just fill out a paperwork and then it gets submitted, but we don't inspect the vehicles, or we don't do all that, if it's anybody, it's probably the DOT.
Yeah, so they come to the police station every year? If I have a towing service, I come to the police station?
They, they submit their, like, insurance policy with us, and we log it, is what we do.
Or licensed towing company, so it looks like it's a like, a license.
Yeah, it's a license that they can operate.
That they're allowed.
So it's not really a tow truck inspection fee?
That's, that's.
It's a tow truck registration fee.
Registration, and we rather use them, they get on our list, so, you know, when we have an accident, they go by list through the county, then, okay, clover lease first, and then the next, you know, tow is boards, and then we just keep track of, you know.
So it's better to say it's a registration fee.
It's more registration fee.
That's, yeah, registration.
And that is, that's something that's done by the police department, should we move that into the law enforcement section too? Or is it okay under traffic and vehicles?
Yeah, that's all I'm saying.
Okay.
But that's a proactive paying, uh, is a one-time? Because they're not paying, nobody's paying for it, they're just.
If you acquire, it's similar to the other ones, probably.
It also really doesn't say, is it per year?
We need to check it, I also put question marks around it.
Like, say I go out of business, I'm no longer there, and then I come back, someone bothers me, you have to re-register, you know what I mean? I, I don't know. Man, you're always talking, yeah.
Ready, move on?
Yep.
Cool, next one is vegetation. So we condensed down the different breakouts for an arborist license, and we just all did a few for arborist licenses. And it's two hundred dollars, as simple as that. Vehicles for hire. Amber, correct me if I'm wrong, but we were trying to remove this because there's no taxis in the city, but we left it because if a taxi were to come to the city, then it's already in the code, and it doesn't have to be reset.
Yeah, that's what we did.
Yeah.
No one's using it, but.
It keeps it simple, it's not hurting anything being in there, and it creates less work in the future. And it's only three little pieces. The last one is the door front, now, we simply just added an inflationary increase of twenty-five cents, fifty cents, doesn't matter much. But it kind of just.
And who manages that?
Uh, the port.
Port Authority?
Port Authority manages the force, and it's the dredging, they use it for dredging, it's, but it goes to the city. But they're, they're the ones who collect it.
So is that like, uh, boats that are in the marina?
Yes, 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 absolutely, it's docking fee for them, and then they collect that fee, uh, then it's transferred to the city, but we use that in conjunction with them to basically maintain the, the canal, or the, 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 um, uh, the trail creek.
Yeah, the dredging and all that stuff, okay.
And I think we worked with Tim on that, Mr. Frank, on that.
Yes.
And it, and it's also set by, we can only go so much on that.
Yeah, I love it, right?
And the rest of the report, again, is the comparative fees, and then some of the calculation backup is straight reference. We talked about the heating and cooling fees. We also did a calculation for a pump, the plumbing inspection fee that's found in the, in the fee schedule. We already talked about pavement cuts. We also did a calculation for the electrical inspection and service, we did it for commercial properties and residential properties. And then for short-term rental registration, we did a calculation, but it, it can end up going over that calculation anyway.
What is the calculation, curiosity, I forget? Oh, so we kept it, I got you. I would like to know what the group.
Right, so, it comes out to
anything about that one.
Retrieving your costs, but it doesn't get rid of the fact that it's just.
It's capped.
A nuisance, so. Any more questions or discussion points?
Well, very good, thank you.
Yep.
Do any, do any other cities charge fees or have any kind of regulations that reduces the scrappers? The scrap prices are, they come up on non-maily about twenty times a day. Think we're kind of missing out on, you know, this is tax-free money they're, they're getting by doing this. You know, a lot of their vehicles, they really shouldn't be on the road, well, the trailers that were on play, no lights on them, you know, the vehicles aren't. You know, when you put these three hundred, one hundred fourteen, three hundred thousand dollar homes out on the bridge, are they gonna be going around on refuse days, seeing what are, what they put out in their refuse? Do they allow, uh, uh, scrapping in Carville, or Fishers, or Noblesville, or Westfield, or Zionsville, or Avon, Brownsburg?
Yeah, I don't know, that wasn't something I, I looked into. I could if you wanted to.
What about scrappers?
If other.
Putting a fee on them?
Allow it.
It'd probably be like a license.
It would be like permitting fee.
Right. License registration.
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, I know that scrappers might be sort of annoying, but at the same time, they sort of provide the service.
Amen. I'm in favor.
I, I set it out and just. No, it's fine, no, it's fine.
And we have, yeah, we have the most, we accept the termination.
You guys do.
I'm, I'm saying we let them, we let them along.
Yeah.
I think they do as much good as they do evil.
I'll look into the ones we tagged about vacant and abandoned and try to get those out.
Yeah, I got some ultimately, but it's impacted.
I think we need to do, because we have legislation already, right? So I think we have to plug it in to what exists already, and how it's defined. So, I mean, that already exists, we're just talking about adding us props to it.
Yes, I agree with that, not to try to reinvent a, a new ordinance, try to like just manipulate the what we have, yes. And also keep in mind, it's good that we condensed all this, because now we've started our automation process, and we're gonna put in our fees into that, and instead of having a, a whole lot of fees, well, because they're gonna be drop-down menus, and what are you doing today? Oh, I've got an AC, okay, AC, I may not know that it's a heat pump or something like that, and it really doesn't matter. Sue knows I'm gonna go out there for an hour, and I'm gonna spend the same amount of time, AC, you know, heater. It's, it makes it much more simpler for the user, and for people using it on the opposite side of us. So that's kind of, it goes, it's gonna fit nice into our new automation package that we're getting.
And that'll also help with updating your fees in the future, because you have more data behind everything that you're doing.
Correct, so over a two-year period, we can start looking at those fees and how we structured them now, and if we, and we can start seeing, really tracking how, how those fees are really looking, because, um, it'll just be a little bit more, we can collect more data with, with the, with the, with the package that we have right now.
Yeah, you, you may have answered this, I don't know, or talked about it already.
Yeah.
But the new system that you're getting, then is the public gonna be able to somehow go into the system and see how much the fees are?
Absolutely.
For everything that's going on?
Correct, it'll be posted, wh, wh, when we have the new fee study, or, I'm sorry, fee schedule. Hopefully, we can post that online, like, what's it cost, it'll be easier to explain, I mean, it's hard for me to explain thirty cents per amp, you know? Uh, those people don't even know what that means, you know? Uh, it's easier for me to explain, an AC is this, a heater is this, uh, an electrical service is this, you know, it doesn't matter what the amps are. And then in, inside that system, they'll set up a, a, a user account, like you would in Amazon or something like that, and you'll be able to upload everything right then and there, you can even be able to do it from your phone. Yeah, all right, we'll be right there.
Skylar, I had a question. Is it a, a good idea to have some contractors and people who, who could utilize and just take a look at it?
Test drive it. Yeah.
Have you done it already?
We're gonna get it set up, and we've picked out about four or five contractors.
People who, who not only work in Michigan City, but in neighboring communities that way, they have an idea, or that, I think they'll, they'll give you some really good feedback.
So we've got a couple, we've got probably five or six that we work with who really want to be automated, and they already use like emailing, texting, they're, they're very savvy.
Absolutely.
Absolutely, and we've have, we, we know who they are, we're gonna hand them, once we get up and running, it's really the idea is to give them kind of first dibs at it, and have them set up an account, and really walk through that, and really give us some feed, absolutely, give us feedback.
I was thinking even before adopting this, maybe have them look at it and see if there's any feedback, maybe we can modify some of this stuff, in case if there's a need to.
Oh, you're talking about the fees too, yes.
Well, one of the biggest things that the new system is going to enable us to do is, is for example, probably one of the biggest violators we have is when you come in to get a building permit, you tell us what your estimated cost is, and you're gonna build that house out there on Lake Shore Drive for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, it's the standard amount, everybody puts it in there, and then the day after they finish the house, they sell it for a million, okay? If we base it on square footage, you can't lie about square footage, it's there, it's. It's something tangible that you can deal with. But we don't have that data right now. So if we were to make those changes now, we don't know if we're going to lose money, gain money, what we're going to do. But once we have that data, the new system's going to give us that data. After a few years, we can revisit this and go, we're going to start using square footage now instead of estimated cost.
Makes sense.
And that's one of the things that the new system is going to help us with that we don't have right now.
We're going to be able to capture a lot more data that's going to give us more information about, I think, these fees and then where we should be, let's say, a five-year period after we look back on it. And you'll be able to print it out and understand it very easily. Then we can have Brandon back and look at them again.
Amber, I've got a question. If we impose building fines on like the vacant and abandoned building thing, where we've encumbered the title, will those fees be dropped to the sheriff's sale? They just get a raise?
It depends, so like a tax sale, it very well could be eliminated. Correct. Correct.
Yes.
So that's always a risk.
So, yeah, there's a balance between being punitive and trying to get behaviors you want and just kind of losing.
No, totally, it's the fine balance.
That's right, the abandoned tend to go away because they end up on the tax sale and then they get forgiven. And so the abandoned is not so much of an issue for our department as it is the vacants.
So how do you find the vacants, is it unkept yards?
It's a combination, it's unkept yards, it's the broken windows, it's the hole in the roof, it's whatever it might be, the unkempt yard. It's the fact that they don't have electricity or different things like that.
Not when you see it.
I mean, I know buildings right now that are vacant. I can tell you they're vacant, but they take care of them. That's really probably not on our radar, you know, from the standpoint of, we have, there's one next door that's abandoned and falling down, you know, or vacant falling down, you know, that's the one on the radar. Yeah. And we all know, I mean, we, you drop through the neighborhoods, you all do. Keep that going in your head. What do you?
So this is just a draft, remember? I was making notes through it so you guys could see what it's going to look like coming to you, because it's a lot. I'm trying to put it out there, but I was making notes,